Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, August 10, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. Public participation in the meeting, members can attend in person, or they can watch or listen to the meeting live on Channel 4 or at LHCaz.gov/tv. We'll now have an invocation from Chaplain B. Evans. Good evening, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Linda Seaver.
Good evening. Let's pray. Father God, we're just so pleased that we could come into your throne room. That you just accept us, Lord, just as we are. Usually, Lord, I know you're in my heart and as I'm in your presence about our country, but tonight it's our city, Lake Havasu City, which we love so much. We thank you, Father, for this council. It looks from the agenda like they have big decisions to make, which are going to impact a lot of people. So we just ask, Father, that they have ears to hear, that their hearts are right, that their yes will be yes, and their no will be no. And we give you all the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Well, you know, you can't give me a microphone, and I'm not going to say something about the Havasu Community Health Foundation. I'd love to talk about all 29 programs that we now have, but I'm going to just make a quick announcement on what our newest thing is. Beginning next Wednesday, at the food bank, we will be offering free COVID testing and free shots to anybody that wants it. There will be no administrative fee, no charge of any kind. It's open to the entire public. Have a good meeting tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all that the Havasu Community Health Foundation does. All right, we will move on to the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here to serve.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is the Call to the Public. This is where the opportunity where citizens have to address the city within any of the issues within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. You don't have to sign up prior to speaking, prior to the Call to the Public, but we did have several that did, so we'll start with those, and then anyone that would like to speak a Call to the Public afterwards can do so. So we'll start with Greg Beffer. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Greg Beffer, for the record. I just want to start off by saying the same thing I said the other day when I met with you at the coffee, and that is the COVID narrative is crumbling right before our eyes. Every day, we are seeing more and more people stand up, not just here in the United States, but all across the world, against the tyranny that their governments are imposing on them. We have officers kicking in doors in Australia for COVID violations, things I never thought that I would ever see in my lifetime as a former police officer, but I'm seeing it here. And these lies, we talked to you about the lies from the very beginning. I came in here, the first thing I talked to you about was the ability to discern the truth from a lie. And what you have chosen to do is embrace the lie. You have ignored the truth, and you've embraced a lie. And now it's time to address that lie. When I talked to you the other day, I asked you two things. The first one was, give me some metrics to justify continuing this local emergency proclamation. What metrics are you using? Couldn't do it. Anybody here can go back and look at that tape, and you don't have to be a police officer to know that you've been lied to, that I was lied to. Then you lied a second time when I said, ask why this council has been silent on this issue, why they've not addressed it, and it's not been brought forward. And you told me that nobody, nobody on this council had brought it forward. It had not been discussed to pull that local emergency proclamation, and it's a lie, because Nancy Campbell did. Her very first night, she came in here and you shut her down. So the second question was, why have you abdicated the role of this entire council in addressing whether or not this local emergency proclamation should continue? Because we're not in a local emergency, by any stretch of the imagination weren't back then and aren't now. So what I want to know here tonight is, and what you've done is, you've looked at the law over here, the legal side, and your attorney can tell you this, what you haven't done is look at the lawful side, the moral law, the natural law, the principles that govern our constitution. You have abdicated, every single one of you have abdicated your responsibility to uphold the Constitution. That is your only priority, and that is your only duty. In addition to managing the physical resources of this city, of which we are not, you have abdicated that responsibility to do no harm. And by your inaction, and your silence isn't action, by not speaking out on this, you have caused harm. By not taking a position as a council collectively, and us not hearing where you stand on the Constitution and this local emergency proclamation, that one person here apparently has no data or evidence to support sustaining it, wasn't, didn't have any to begin with, and we've established that. Now, by your actions, you're continuing a fraud. So we could add that to one more list of, along with 18 USC 241 and 242, which I know your attorney knows about. Fix this.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Stephen Tummanello.
My name is Stephen Tummanello. I'm a resident of Lake Havasu City. I'm National Coordinator for the Great American Patriots, which is based here in Mojave County, and we have chapters in several states around the country now. Also, one of the founding members of the Havasu Patriots. Wanted to thank Mayor Sheehi for meeting with our group yesterday. We had a very good meeting with the mayor, and he is going to be speaking tomorrow at our Havasu Patriots meeting, it'll noon to 2:00 at the library, along with our state Representative Leobias Succi. And also, the mayor has agreed to appear at our Calling All Patriots event, which is going to be at the Aquatics Center on Saturday, August 21st, from 11 till about 4:00. And we have a real great lineup there. We have Senator Sonny Borelli. We have Kelly Ward, Sheriff Schuster, Ron Gould, Hildy Angus, Travis Lingenfelter, so a lot of the key members of our community that are involved in our government. And what this is all about is about preserving our rights and freedoms here, in our county and in our city. And so a lot of the citizens are very concerned about things that are going on around the world, as Greg had alluded to. And so with our leaders speaking to us, we hope that the citizens of our area will feel more comfortable. And I know that our conversation yesterday, we conveyed that to the mayor, and I believe that we'll see a very good response from the community showing up for this event. So we're very excited about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Lerner. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is David Lerner. I'm a member of the Great American Patriots also. And tonight, I want to address the Admiralty Flag removal from all of our city offices. The Admiralty Flag is the one that you got right behind you there with the gold fringe on it. That Admiralty Flag, we'll get into it. I'm going to start with the Act of 1871. On February 21st, 1871, the Act passed when the country was weakened and financially depleted in the aftermath of the Civil War. It was a strategic move by foreign interests, international bankers, who were intent on gaining a stranglehold on the coffers and the neck of America. By passing the Act of 1871, Congress committed treason against the people who were sovereign under the Grants and Decrees of the Declaration of Independence and the Organic Constitution. Admiralty law is the law of the sea, and banking law is maritime law. Maritime admirality law was originally for the purpose of governing ships that were importing and exporting products abroad. It was a way to transfer custody of merchandise abroad, and a certificate was issued to account for each product. The owners of the private corporation, United States of America, were the City of London and the Vatican. The United States Treasury was a private corporation registered in Puerto Rico. The difference is that the flag that is displayed is legal notice to all who enter of the type of law that will hold jurisdiction. The constitutional United States flag signifies common law jurisdiction. The gold fringe United States flag is the Admiralty of War flag, which denotes admiralty or martial law. I'm a United States Marine. I took the oath. That oath never expired. I am asking for you to remove the Admiralty Flags from all of our city offices and replace them with the correct flag of the United States of America. The corporation of the United States has been dissolved. We are now the United States of America, the Republic. I thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Vanderjack.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you. Karen Vanderjack, a 45-year resident of Lake Havasu City and the Great American Patriots, from the Nuremberg Trial. Herman Gering, this is a... They asked him, how did you convince the German people to go along with all this? And he's, well, it has nothing to do with Nazism. It has to do with fear. You get people to be scared of something, and they'll let you do anything. I'm getting really scared right now. But I'm not scared of COVID. I'm scared of you. Our country, I mean, I'm sorry, our county had a grant, and this was at the county level, but they were actually going to employ people to go around and check the welfare of our health. And it was tabled, that's good, but the supervisors were still considering it. Supervisor Johnson talked on KNTR, and he said he'd like to spend the $41 million for a new fairgrounds to double as a quarantine camp. I'm the government. I'm here to help you. That should cause you to run for the hills. What scares me the most is looking to the very people that I've elected into office. They don't do research, and they don't really know what's going on. Listening to the CDC is not research. Believing in the mainstream media is not research. Believing the county or state health directors is not research. Listening to other towns and what they're doing, that's not research. Not listening to people who really have researched, that is a problem. Now, you say you're following the science, but instead you are becoming complicit to this medical tyranny. This is causing... So we're under an emergency proclamation still. Again, keeping that fear level up. Mayor, you told us we're in good shape, because we know now, what we didn't know before when the proclamation went into place. Well, let's see, we know the masks don't work. The Danish study is the only peer-approved, double-blind study, and it proved that they don't work. The CDC announced that PCR test is not valid, and they're going to let it go in January. I don't know why they don't do it now. The vaccine is not safe and effective. There's been a lot of deaths and serious damages. The corporate stores have used it as a tool to force masking and vaccine, and they say there's a variant, but there's no way to test the variant. Well, money was given to hospitals for COVID, which incentivized them so that if someone had a car accident, that could be counted as a COVID death. So greater and greater sins that are going on because of the temptation of money. A vaccine is not necessary when the therapeutics are available. Either there's ivermectin, of course, there's hydroxychlorophyll, we know that. In fact, the rule is vaccines are not for a virus that's 99.8% curable and their therapeutics available. Now, what would we like you to do? Announce the end of the emergency proclamation. Call on citizens to help you have a plan to alleviate fear and deal with corporate stores who are now using store policy over our liberties.
Thank you, Karen. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during Call to the Public? All right, seeing them, we'll close the Call to the Public. Moving on to item six is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items on the consent agenda for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Koch.
Motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch, and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote. Thank you. Item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is Announce Vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, there are a couple of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, three alternate members, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start this report with an update of your conversation that you had just last week. Mayor Sheehi attended the Governor's Roundtable to discuss issues that are important to Lake Havasu City. Some of those topics you discussed with the Governor and his team included short-term rentals, tourism, and attainable housing. Our Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation is searching for recreation leaders. Recreation leaders assist with various camps, events, and programs throughout the year. To check out this job posting and the many other job postings that are available through Lake Havasu City, please visit our website at LHCaz.gov. And to recognize that August is National Water Quality Month. Lake Havasu City takes water quality very seriously and continuously strives to ensure safe, clean drinking water for our customers. A yearly water quality report details where our water comes from, what is in our water, and how it compares to standards set by the regulatory authorities, which we must report our findings to. Lake Havasu City is required by both the federal government and the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality under the Safe Drinking Water Act to provide this report to our customers, our residents, on an annual basis. Please visit our website to see the most current report, and that's again at LHCaz.gov. Just a few facts about the city's water service and our water supply. Our groundwater supply draws from the Colorado River Aquifer with an annual allocation of 28,581 acre feet, and that is 9.3 billion gallons of water a year. Again, that's our allocation, not our use, but our allocation for Lake Havasu. Currently, the city utilizes as the primary source of drinking water the horizontal collector well that is capable of producing 26 million gallons of water a day. The city distributes its water through 538 miles of water lines, ranging from four inches wide to 48 inches, serving over 33,000 residential and commercial accounts. And currently, we have 26 water tanks totaling 22 million gallons of water storage that serve seven pressure zones within the city. Speaking of water, it sounds like it's raining outside. And our COVID update, this information, of course, provided by the Mojave County Public Health Department, and these numbers are as of yesterday, August 9th. There are 174 new cases since my last report, and you can see the breakdown in the graph that's displayed on the screen. Currently, there are 120 active cases of COVID in Lake Havasu City. And once again, a reminder, let's be smart, let's be vigilant, and please support one another. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to item eight on our agenda, Public Hearings. Starting with 8.1 is Adopt Ordinance Number 21-1264, amending the zoning classification and district boundary of approximately 156, excuse me, 157 acres of the Havasu Riviera specific plan. Mr. Morris.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you. The subject property is known locally as Havasu Riviera. It's at Havasu Riviera Parkway, south part of town, just off of Highway 95. Here's an area map of the property. The current zoning, there are some developed subdivisions that are currently zoned RM, and then some mixed-use general and mixed-use neighborhood zoning properties. Those properties already have their zoning established. The subject area is this kind of, excuse me, a greenish color, and then a portion of one of these subdivisions. They're asking for some rezone in the portion of the subdivision, and then to establish the zoning for the rest of the area that's not been hard-zoned yet. So the existing approval, the City Council adopted the Havasu Riviera specific plan for about 250 acres in 2008. This is the existing approval that went along with that. With the portions here of lots, these areas four, five, six, seven, and eight are the subject of this request. Lots, areas one, two, and three have already been rezoned, as shown on that previous rezone, for mixed-use general, mixed-use neighborhood, and then residential, multiple-family, which they develop as single-family residential in these cases. The previous, under the previous zoning designations, they were known as mixed-use and R4. Our current general, our current development code has renamed those. The MU is now a mixed-use neighborhood and a mixed-use general, so there's two different types of mixed-use now, as opposed to the one that was available in 2008. The R4 was in 2008, and now it's just called RM. So it's a similar zoning district, but a different name. So those specific areas are, area number five here was for a mixed-use, and area four was for residential, and then the areas six, seven, and eight were also for residential in that 2008 plan. The request that they're proposed is shown here. Some of the highlights are existing lots, some of the existing lots in the Ridge subdivision that's currently zoned RM. They're asking for lots 28 through 49, about 21 of those lots, to be rezoned to a planned development, still with the RM zoning, but with a planned development to allow up to 40 feet in height, whereas the underlying RM allows 30 feet. They're also asking to, I'm going to flip back to the other plan, to swap area four, the residential in area four, and swap that with the mixed-use in area five. So they're asking that that residential go over to area five, and that the mixed-use general and mixed-use neighborhood go over here to area four, and they're going to split that up into two different types of mixed-use. Area 4A is mixed-use general, area 4B is mixed-use neighborhood. And there, on all these properties outlined in red, they're asking for some exceptions to the underlying zoning. One of them is for all the properties to be able to go up to 40 feet in height. The mixed-use general is allowed up to 30 feet normally. They're asking to go up to 40 feet for that. And the mixed-use neighborhood is typically allowed 25. Again, they're asking for 40 feet for that. Under the previous approval of the plan for this area, the mixed-use areas were allowed to go up to 60 feet. So they're asking that be reduced, not as much, they're still asking for an exception to go up a little higher, up to 40 feet in those areas. And then areas five, six, seven, and eight will remain residential, will be residential. And due to the topography and the challenges in that area, they are going to ask for some exceptions. For areas, for all those areas, they're asking for a maximum building height of 40 feet, as opposed to 30 feet. They're also asking for lot width to be 50 feet instead of the 60 feet that's normally required, and the lot depth be 100 feet instead of the 120 feet that's normally required. And then a minimum lot area of 6,000, whereas it normally is 7,200 square feet. And then a side setback, reverse corner lots to be 10 feet instead of 15 feet. Understanding, as the developer doesn't anticipate using all those exceptions throughout the projects, the properties here, but they want to have that flexibility in case they need it for unique situations there. And in closing, the Planning Commission heard this item at their July 7th meeting and recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. That concludes my presentation. Open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any initial questions of Council before we bring the applicant up? Councilmember Lane.
If I may, thank you. And Luke, you may not know the answer to this. We may have to wait for the applicant. By reducing the lot setback, the size of the lots, are there additional houses that are going to be built, or is it the same number of houses, the lots are just smaller?
Well, I believe overall for the development, I think they're well under the maximum homes that are allowed there. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but some reason, 1,000 or so was sticking in my mind, but I think they're well under that. The developer will probably have a better idea how many they're actually going to do.
Okay, I'll see if the developer answers that question when they come up. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
Were there any concerns with planning and zoning when it went to them, and what was there? Did they approve it, or?
The Planning Commission.
Planning and zoning, did they, did they ever give a recommendation to Council?
Yes, they recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Any issues come up in that meeting that we should be aware of?
It seemed like a pretty straightforward meeting.
Okay.
I don't recall anything.
Thank you.
All right, applicant, would you all like to give a presentation, or?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group. The applicant and part of this development project. Quick update, first of all, for some of you, most of you have been in the loop. We've worked closely with staff and leadership over the last couple of years, and again, recently, as we continue to move forward. The project's making great progress. We're through three, the first three neighborhoods, Parcels 1, 2, and 3 are fully developed. We're finishing paving the concrete streets and starting to put the entry monumentation and landscaping in. So the project's continuing to make great progress. It's been well received in the community, with tremendous lot sales over the last year and a half, two years since we opened. And so we're kind of in this process of trying to move forward here and finish out the rest of the planning and prepare for construction on the rest of the community. As Luke said, he did a good job of kind of overviewing where we've been and where we're at. This goes back to 2008, when this community was first envisioned and put together with a specific plan. Today, the city doesn't have a specific plan process, but the specific plan, in essence, set the development standards for this community going forward. That included the zoning Luke talked about for bubbles 1 through 8, which at the time was mixed-use and R4 residential. The mixed-use areas had a 60-foot height exception to them. The R4 was standard multifamily R4 at the time. Between now and then, in 2016, the city updated their development code, so as Luke alluded to, the zoning designations changed, so we no longer have R4, we have RM, we no longer have just MU, we have a series of mixed-use zoning districts. When we came before you a couple of years ago and worked through Parcels 1, 2, and 3, we went through a similar process, and we had to, in essence, update the zoning. There were some little changes. We flipped Parcels 2 and 3. Mixed-use was in 2 before. We changed that to multifamily, which is, in essence, single-family. But anyway, long story short, we've made a similar approach on Parcels 1, 2, and 3. Those are developed now, we're moving into the rest of the community, starting to grade and extend infrastructure, and we're here before you to kind of, in essence, clean up, invest the rest of the zoning throughout the neighborhoods as we move forward. To address a couple of those questions and concerns, it sounds like a lot when you listen to the exceptions or read the staff report. We're dealing with, in essence, one bubble of mixed-use, where we're taking it from, again, the original mixed-use to now a combination of mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use general, very similar to what happened in the, what is Area 1. That was a mixed-use area that a couple of years ago got changed to a combination of mixed-use general and mixed-use neighborhood. The difference here is, like Luke alluded to, we switched the location from the location closest down by the lake, number 5. We're putting the mixed-use portion into the back part of the community and moving the residential forward into the forward part of the community. The other parcels, 6, 7, and 8, were in the specific plan, zoned multifamily, and we're just updating that to the RM zoning district. The conditions that you hear, again, they sound like a lot. The way this project has developed, there's tremendous topography out there. A lot of you have been out there and seen it. The development challenges working around the washes and the topography have led to, those familiar with the lots that have been developed, some different-sized lots, a lot of elevation change, just a unique development plan, so to speak. A lot of it's unique to Havasu. It's been well received, but what that leads to is lots that maybe don't necessarily, all of them don't necessarily meet the width minimums, but they certainly are big enough in overall size because they terrace down a hillside and they have multiple levels to them. Or conversely, they don't meet the depth minimum, but they're wide and they kind of go along a ridge or something to that effect. From an overall density standpoint, the multifamily can be a little misleading. From an overall density standpoint, the multifamily can be a little misleading. The specific plan does have an underlying entitlement of 1,048 residential units, even though with the prop, the parcels that have been developed and these that are quote residential multifamily, to date, everything that's been developed has been single family. So they carry a multifamily zoning, but then when we go through our covenants and CCNRs and deed restrictions, we will ultimately craft that neighborhood to something that fits and everything we're doing out there, for the most part, is single family residential. So even though the zoning is there as multifamily, most of what we're building gets restricted to multifamily or to single family. To answer your question, we're going to end up somewhere in the 650 unit range when it's all said and done, not 1,000 units. So the density of the overall community is substantially less than was ever entitled or envisioned for the community. A lot of that's topography, the lay of the land, the market, what people are looking for, a combination of all those factors have led to, you know, if you've seen the lots, some of them are smaller and a little closer together, but they're multi-levels, they're terracing down slopes, up slopes. But at the end of the day, because of those constraints, there's just not room to build 1,000 units. The height exception and the setback exceptions, again, sound like a lot, but it really goes down to that overall land planning effect. When we go in and actually detail out each of these bubbles and we're dealing with that topography and we're laying out the lots, we don't end up with very many that need those exceptions, but we do have a few. We did present and run through planning and zoning, the preliminary plat for all of this. And if you really look at the lot layout and configuration of that, probably 10% of the lots in the total red area you see on your screen are using one of those exceptions that are outlined. From a height aspect, this project sits obviously way down low, closer to the lake, below the city, can hardly see it from anywhere in town. The amount of elevation change between the highway and the project, let alone within the project, is tremendous. And so the height exceptions, really, we become more critical on that than anybody because at the end of the day, everything's terraced up away, obviously trying to look for views. We're not going to put 40-foot structures that block people's views within the community. There are a few select areas on the back part of the project. Again, you can't see them from anywhere in town, but as you work your way back, we're trying to provide opportunities to get up a little higher and see out, and not just at the lake. I mean, the views are tremendous back at the city, out towards Sarah Park and in the desert surroundings. So again, the amount of lots that are actually going to utilize a 40-foot height exception are 10% or less of the overall plan. So again, acts, it looks like a lot, sounds like a lot, but it just helps us really create a community that has some diversity to it and creates a pretty, pretty fun product when it's all said and done. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Great, thank you. Are there, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. You actually answered my question. My concern was that you were getting the exception so that you could squeeze more houses into that area, but what it sounds like is because of the topography, you can't do it, you can't fit a resident onto the regular lot. And those are few and far between. It's, you're not taking a area built for 10 houses and putting in 12 houses.
Correct.
You're, you're asking for the exceptions because of the topography of the land for a particular lot.
Correct. Yeah, and those exceptions really are dealing with the, the multifamily zoned parcels that are being developed mainly as single family. We do have three parcels, 1A, which is up in the corner that we've been working on, a component that has a townhome project to it. We're talking 17 units. And then in the back part of the mixed use in 4A, looking at a, you know, a couple of story, you know, multifamily project, but again, 20, 30, 40 units, not hundreds of units. So at the end of the day, the overall density, and that's kind of been confirmed already, we did, like I said, do a preliminary plat that went through planning and zoning along with this action. And if you add up the lots that got approved as part of that preliminary plat process, it's under 600 units in total. Those couple little pockets that I talked about will put it up closer to 650 total in the whole community, but nowhere near what's already, what is entitled today.
Right, okay. And then the other question I have is, one, the people that have already purchased our lots, do any of these changes have an effect on them at all?
Only ones that has an effect on is what's labeled 3A at the top of the screen right there. There's those 21 lots that are part of the Ridge neighborhood that has been developed. Some of those lots have been sold, some of them have not. Those owners are aware. The, the only exception we're asking for on those, they're on the back row, they're at the very back of the community. Those owners are anxious to have that little extra height. That's what the exception request is here with those. So those are the, that's the only area that this action affects of currently platted or approved properties.
Okay, and then just one last question. I noticed that nobody attended your, your public meeting.
Yeah.
But you did have two inquiries that you were able to handle since then. Have there been any additional inquiries from current property owners out there?
There have not since then, and those inquiries were from owners in the community. They didn't come to the public meeting, but they reached out to our sales team and our development team because they were already in the community and aware. We tried to educate everyone that was already in the community as to what's going on and what's happening. They're obviously all curious, you know, and ask a lot of questions about how the rest of the community is going to be developed. This land plan that you see is in our CCNRs. I mean, they already have an idea of how this thing's going to be developed when it rolls forward, but those two questions came from existing owners that we talked with directly. No concerns, just questions more about what was going on.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Vice Mayor Coke?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, is there still a component of some sort of a hotel or accommodations facility out at the site?
So we've been working with staff and leadership on that. So originally in the specific plan, parcel one, up in the corner that Luke's pointing to, you know, was a mixed use parcel. It, the entitlements had a resort hotel component entitled. It wasn't required to be built, but it was an allowed use, an entitled use. As this community developed and we worked with hotel developers and worked with other folks that were looking to support this community, what we really found is that this island, a fee simple property for a hotel developer was not appeasing. They either wanted to be on the water as part of the state park project, or they wanted to be on the highway. It's kind of lost in the middle without highway exposure and without location access to the water and things like that. So we had a hard time ever attracting that. The idea originally was a larger resort hotel, but again, without either of those components, especially being on the water, it didn't work. So then it went to trying to attract a smaller boutique hotel, and even that became a struggle. So at this point, we're going away from any sort of hotel. It just doesn't fit today's world and the direction of this community. But we are working on some resort type lodging and that being, we're still working on the details, we've been working with leadership and staff on that a little bit. The townhome project I talked about, which is now envisioned for that parcel 1A, and then in the back as part of the mixed use in 4A, a resort lodging type component where, I don't want to throw out the word VRBO, but you know, a, a way where people can rent and be part of the community, can come in for shorter stays, experience the community, have that location of the marina. So it kind of acts and works like a resort, you know, or like a resort lodging type component, but it's not a true hotel. So at this point, no, no large hotel being planned or looking to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Oh, we, we'll need to open up the public hearing. Councilmember Moses, did you have any questions?
My comment was just on the, and really just maybe Luke, you can fill me in, but the, the 10 feet setback on the, on the corner lots, is that going to create traffic issues or anything like that?
Don't anticipate that being an issue. Basically, it's instead of a 15-foot setback, it's a 10-foot setback, which is fairly common for a, a standard corner lot. So I don't anticipate any issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
And I had the opportunity to go out into this area about two and a half weeks ago, and all of these things on paper are very, very easy to see when you're actually out there. You can see where the neighborhood, again, the burden truly is on, on the group because all of their residents that are purchasing from them are going to belong to their associations. And so obviously, they, they, they have the best interest of all of those people in mind because it, it's its own master plan community. And if you take it back to like the McCollough days with what we have with our industrials on lakeside, they're swapping it so we can get, you know, residential on that area. So it's, it's a really great opportunity. I mean, a lot has changed in, so what, 2008? So you know, we're 15, 16 years away and it's actually, it's coming together and coming to fruition in a, in a really nice way. So all of these changes, again, it's, it's a lot of words to read as far as the exceptions, but it truly impacts a really small amount of, of those neighborhoods. So this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion?
Councilmember Campbell, please.
Here I go. This is the big one. I move to adopt ordinance number 21-1264, amending the zoning classification and district boundaries of approximately 157 acres of Havasu Riviera specific plan as shown on the attached proposed zoning map to include track 2401, lots 28 through 49, from multiple family residential R-M to multifamily residential slash planned development, R-M slash PD. Area 4A from agricultural preservation, A-P, to mixed use slash general slash planned development, MU-G slash PD. Area 4B from agricultural preservation, A-P, to mixed use neighborhood slash planned development, MU, are you kidding me? This is, Jesus, MU-N slash PD, strike that, to allow a maximum building height of 40 feet in areas 5-A from agricultural preservation, A-P, to multifamily residential slash planned development, R-M slash PD, to family residential, oh, no, yeah, to family residential slash planned development, R-M slash PD, to allowing the exemptions, maximum building height of 40 feet, minimum lot width of 50 feet, minimum lot depth of 100 feet, minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet, and minimum reverse corner side yard of 10 feet.
That's it done.
Second.
Motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing number eight to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you. All right, item 8.2 is adopt ordinance number 21-1261, amending the zoning classification and district boundary for 2860 Jamaica Boulevard South, track 2271, block 10, lots eight, nine, and 10, from limited commercial C1 to limited multifamily R3. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. Here's the area map for this project. It's at, near the corner of Jamaica Boulevard in Chimavueve. The subject property has an alley that goes to this, on the south side and the east side of the property. It consists of a total of three lots that are about one acre in size altogether. It generally slopes about 13 feet from the, from the northeast down to the southwest. The current zoning for the property is the C1. The properties to the east, south, and west across the alley in Jamaica are all zone R3, which is the subject, the requested zoning for this property. Property to the north is C1 and it's home to a dental practice. There's also some C1 property in the area at Chimavueve and Jamaica. At that corner, there's a gas station down the corner and there are two vacant C1 lots next to that. And then there's another C1 lot with a, it's a, I think it's a service club in there of some sort. And expanding around, there's this multiple family R3 zoning, and then it goes to some duplex zoning and single family on the east and south. And on the west side across the road, across Jamaica, again, it's R3, and then it goes to RE and golf course. But there is a mix and there's still a commercial node up here at Chimavueve and Jamaica. Back in January of 2017, the city council approved the rezon of these three lots here at the, the corner of Jamaica and Chimavueve from C1 to R3. Those are currently being developed as multiple family residential and the subject property is also intended, the property developer intends to develop that as multiple family residential also. Give you a little more history of the general plan and how it relates to these commercial nodes around the, around the city. Back when the city was originally subdivided, there were a number of commercial nodes that were established and the general plan called out those to be commercial nodes at these little red circles throughout the community. It was common practice in those days to have these commercial nodes in neighborhoods in the hopes that they could develop to serve commercial needs for those neighborhood, neighborhood citizens. Over the past 50 years, those haven't really developed for the most part, and these properties have sat vacant for a number of years as commercials, commercially zoned property. In 2016, the general plan was amended and a number of those commercial nodes were removed and replaced with residential. So this, what you're seeing here, these circled areas are properties that were, are areas that are originally zoned or general plan designation as commercial nodes. Some examples of what's happened is Bison and Kiowa, those are, all those commercial zoned properties there have been rezoned to residential. There are no commercial zoned properties there anymore. On Palo Verde and Bentley Boulevard, it's similar. There's a number of lots there that have been rezoned to residential. There's still two lots that are commercially zoned there. Down on Arizona Boulevard to the south part of town, there was a commercial node there that's on C1. The two, the lots on either end of that commercial node have been rezoned to residential. And just last council meeting here on Anita Avenue in Avalon, there is a commercial node. A number of those lots are being rezoned, have been rezoned to residential also. There are two nodes that still remain as commercial in the general plan at Chimavueve and McCollough South, and then at McCollough Boulevard North and Jamaica Boulevard. Those two nodes still remain. And of course, the subject property we're talking about here, there has been, the northern portion of this block has been rezoned to R3, and the southern portion now is being, is a subject of this request. The planning and zoning commission heard this item at their January, excuse me, their July 7 meeting. They recommended denial by a vote of seven to zero. They seem to feel that the existing zoning was a better fit for that area. And just to reiterate, the general plan does support the requested zone change. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any initial questions of Mr. Morris from members of the council before we bring the applicant up?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I have a question. It's not necessarily regarding that specific subject property, but can you tell me over on the other side of Chimavueve, that C1 up there, those lots, yeah, are all those developed already? Are they already, I know that there's a gas station there, those other three lots, is that still available for building commercial?
These two lots are, the two lots right adjacent to the gas station are vacant. There's no, they're not developed. And then this one is developed with a service club of some sort. I don't remember the name of it, but.
Okay, so then the property that we're looking at, so this part, that 2872, that's where that dental office is, right?
This is correct.
That's the only commercial building there?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Yeah, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Yeah, if so, you can make your way to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Frank Cortez Senior and I'm one of the owners of the property that we're presenting tonight. As Luke alluded to, the general plan in this particular project calls for residential, multifamily. It's very interesting to me that, like Luke alluded to, the one in the corner was approved about a year and a half, two years ago from commercial to residential. And everyone here knows that a commercial is more attractive in a corner location than an interior lot. We're asking for the project to be approved tonight. We intend to develop multifamily units, two bedroom, two bath each with two car garages. These properties will be long-term rentals. They will not be for speculation, we're not converting into condos. We all know the extreme demand for residential rental units in Havasu. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I have not seen a development since I've been here for years that is multifamily developed for long-term rental. Most of the stuff that's being developed here is either single family homes or condo conversions that are being sold individually. So the rental market is zero. The demand is outrageous. I have a nephew that's been trying to move to Havasu for three months. He's coming Monday to see one house that has 17 applications, which will not be available until October. That tells you the extreme need for residential rental. People that are working here, and I deal with them on a daily basis because I'm also develop properties here. People that are working here, and I deal with them on a daily basis because I'm also develop properties here, they are being pushed out because the demand is so high that the rental values have gone up tremendously. As I said to you, Major, the other day, when I moved here four years ago, a two-bedroom, two-bath unit was $650 a month. Now it's $1,800, if you can find it. As Luke alluded to, there's been other projects in the city that recently been approved. The last one was in Anita, from commercial to residential. We are developing this property to keep it in the family as a permanent, long-term rental units. This will not be offered for sale. This will not be converted to condos. This will be long-term rentals. My son will be speaking with you shortly, and he will show you the amount of positive response that we have received from the neighbors on this development. They definitely do not want a commercial development in that lot, and you will see that. Just to recap, we're asking the approval for this project based on the facts, and I would like to read here something that came across in what a general plan should be, or is, it is. A general plan is the blueprint for the city or county. It describes the future growth and development within the county or city over the long term. It acts as constitution for both public and private development, the foundation upon which our leaders will make growth and use-related decisions. The general plan is meant to express the community goals with respect to both human made and natural environment, and set forth the policies and implementation measures to achieve them for welfare and those who live, work, and do business in the county or city. It can be more clear. The general plan is a guide that the city implemented based on a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of cost, and the input from the community. This is being identi, excuse me, identify as a multifamily residential. That's what you voted on, or the city voted on in 2016. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
I just want to say thank you. This is, we talk a lot about affordable housing, and we think affordable housing is more housing, but it's not. It's, right now, it's, we need long-term rentals. We have a plethora of short-term rentals that we have no control over because it's controlled at the state level, but we just, we don't have rentals available. So I was behind this idea in the zoning to begin with, but I extra like the fact that it is long-term rentals, and I appreciate that there are some developers that are standing up and filling the need of the community by putting long-term rentals in the community rather than just selling a spec house and moving on to the next one. Because this is, in my opinion, this is exactly what the community needs, is more affordable actual rentals. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, and of course, everybody knows here that if I were to convert these units or propose condos, I'll be making a heck of a lot more money than, but we want to keep this, my retirement and his future retirement, and eventually my granddaughter's.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to say thank you. I'm not used to a zoning coming to city council where I've had this many people approach me in a positive way that they wanted a rezoning. Usually I get a lot of, no, no, we don't want it rezoned because it's going to affect our neighborhood in a negative way. But I have had a lot of people reach out to me that they want to see this rezoned because they feel it protects their home values. So, thank you.
You will see in my son's presentation a lot of that.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. I also want to thank you for bringing workforce housing into our community, but I'm a, I know why they did these commercial nodes many, many years ago, and a lot of people keep on saying that they're outdated. And I kind of disagree with that, and the reason why I say that is we have the Riviera now, which is right outside city limits. That's going to be over 680 homes. You have Havasu Foothills that's developing. Obviously, none of these are workforce housing whatsoever at all. You have Havasu Heights taking off, a lot of developers working out there. And I'm just really concerned, the reason why they were put into these neighborhoods is to get traffic off the main highways and direct, have the little neighborhood communities. And believe it or not, everybody keeps saying these are outdated ways of doing these things, and that's not true. To this day, we have developments, brand-new developments growing up all over the metropolitan area where they are actually still doing the same thing. I'm also concerned about these nodes when you have one person, like in this case, that's purchased that center commercial. They bought that a long time ago. They invested a lot of money right there with the intent that that was all supposed to be commercial. And now they're looking at what? What do they do with their buildings? They're just surrounded by, I guess it's a dental, maybe they'll get more work. I've looked at all different sides of this, but if I owned a commercial piece of property that I probably bought decades ago, and I paid for it all, and I bought it and built it, and I have development there, I'd be really concerned if everybody just changed all my zoning and changed my direction. And again, we need to really talk about workforce housing. I get it. I love your concept. I love that you're renting it for full-time. But again, we don't know that for sure. We've all been up on this council before, and I've sat out there, and I've heard people come in and swear up and down they would never do this, that, or the other, and give it about a year, they're selling out and doing this, that, and the other that they promised they wouldn't do. So a lot of history in this community, a lot, and I've been around developers. I know why they put them in place. I know what it's like to kind of be shoved out of a neighborhood zoning. So I'm really concerned and confused about all of these little nodes. And I know 2016, they did this general plan, but here we are, what, five years later, and the dynamics of Lake Havasu City has changed immensely, immensely. So I just hate to see all these commercial nodes go. I really do.
And in response to your comment, the properties that you mentioned, like the Riviera and the other properties that you mentioned, now those are actually long-term rentals. They're single-family homes that people are buying and.
I agree with you 100%. And back in 2016, when this general plan was actually put into place, there was also something put into place which was called opportunity zones. And communities like ours throughout the country took advantage of this and literally focused on those opportunity zones and got developers together and saw the need and the concern, and they put them in these positions, and then they held tight on their commercial because the commercial is what, if we have a community that's all heads in the beds, that's it? Every grocery store, every restaurant, every everything, there'll be a line out the door, and then that's not, I mean, we don't have workforce, we don't have this, but we really have to have a broader conversation again, and I think that's happening. So again, I appreciate all you're doing. I'm being completely transparent and honest up here on how I feel, and that's where I stand.
You know, one other thing, and I hate to bring this up, but because of COVID, they expect a lot of commercials to be vacant in the near future because a lot of people are working out of their home, a lot of people are reducing the square footage. Look at the shops at Havasu.
I totally agree with you on that.
You guys can't get that alive, and that's a beautiful place.
But back in, not even three years ago, I was getting told the same narrative that we don't have commercial, nobody's buying commercial, look at the shops of Havasu and the like. But since then, if you go out and try and buy a light industrial piece of property right now, it's not available. If you try and find just industrial piece of property, it's not available.
Industrial.
It has changed immensely. And I'm concerned, the bigger our community grows and all the surrounding areas, we are going to miss out on opportunities for more restaurants, bars, grocery stores, doctors' offices, dental offices, and we're going to have a line out the door. That's just my personal opinion, and I'm still willing to hear and listen, and obviously, that's what I'm here for.
I mean.
So we're, let's move, let's move on from this part of the conversation. We're not in an opportunity zone in this area. Riviera is in Lake Havasu City limits, just for clarification, and this is not an industrial zone. So we're going to move on with this conversation. I believe Councilmember Lynn has a question or a comment.
I just have a question. The dental officer, did they show up to the meeting? Were there any concerns?
Yes. And he's in the audience tonight, and I anticipate he'll speak at the, or the public hearing.
Okay. I was just curious on what their thoughts were.
All right, any other questions?
I have one more question. I'm sorry. On that R3, the one above it, Luke, do you know, I've driven by there, but are those long-term? Are those rental? What are those?
Those are not condominium units. They're just apartment units. They're rental units. They're not condominium units.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Did you have any other comments, Mr. Ortiz, before we open the public hearing?
I'm done unless you have any questions.
No, I believe we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please, just to make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, you just lifted right up to your level.
Hi, everyone. Alon Seamus. I own Havasu Dental Center, which is that.
Yeah, Mr. Seamus.
It looks a lot bigger in person.
If you could lift your microphone up. Yeah, lift your microphone. Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. All right. Hi, everyone at home. So the area is zoned as C1, and if I'm the only C1 remaining, my property is basically going to be worth a duplex when I sell it because no one's going to want to buy a commercial that's sandwiched in between. Dan Libriola came to me back in 2016 wanting to rezone that other property, and I was just trying to be a nice neighbor. You know, he told me, oh, it's not going to be much. It's not going to be anything in the way. It's going to be really low-key. And now I have a cliff on that side of my property, and I can't take down an old banner because I don't have a ladder that's 18 feet tall. So it's going to block the visibility to my office now on that side. I'm not going to be, you know, people will only see me by the tooth mailbox as I drive by, and hopefully they'll slow down in time to turn. It's the offsets that he has proposed, because Frank was nice enough to give me the the plans when he was doing the public showings. It's five feet from my property line is where these buildings are going to be set. So it is literally going to be people sitting in the chair, looking in someone's house, brushing their teeth. It's just going to be really bad for my business in general to have these homes right on top of me. And on top of it, it is going to, they're going to have to level the lot. And the lot is, as he said, was 13 feet difference. So that's a cliff. That's like, that's a safety hazard now that I have to address when he brings his lot down, because it's not a safety hazard for him. People on his property are safe. They got a 13-foot wall. I have a 13-foot cliff on my side that I'd have to address once he's done leveling the lot, which I already have to do on the other side of my lot now that it's eight feet down. It's also one of the last large commercial lots in Havasu. It is an acre. You can't find an acre-square commercial lot in Havasu to build on. And this property was owned actually by Dan Libriola from 2002 up until a couple of months ago. So it couldn't be developed because he didn't want to. So it's not that there is no one wanting to do it. It's just he was sitting on the property. One day, maybe he'll develop it, which is kind of, and then, you know, it was already mentioned by Nancy that, you know, it's going to be a multitude of opportunities there from daycares to medical offices to restaurants to a coffee shop. Everyone wants one. There are three schools within two miles of that location. There is a middle school and two elementary schools. All the parents are driving past there. That gas station is a line out the door when it comes to lunchtime and after-school. It is really busy and a great opportunity for commercial there. There's alley access, so deliveries and things like that are easy without disrupting flow of commerce. And if you're looking for lots available to develop in Havasu, there's two lots just up the road, like less than a half mile away, that are a third of an acre each. So there are plenty of places to develop homes already mapped out in this town that are lots that can be built on. I'd love to see this property developed. That's why I bought this property, was to develop it. But I think it'd be a great commercial property if given that chance. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
Hello, mayor and council members. My name's Frank Ortiz. I'm the applicant's son and a half-owner of the property. As we know, this rezoning has been a topic of many city council meetings as well as garnering the attention of local newspaper and media. I'd like to take this time and begin with a reading of 39 names that have spoken out in approval for these. I'd be happy to leave my notes behind, and you can cross-check them with names and public records. Vicky Sayar, Kicking Horse Drive, Terry Jameson, the Most Drive.
Sir, if you may, we trust you, 39 names. You can leave it behind us.
It's 39.
Thank you.
This here is of today. These are 18 realtors that spam out looking for people that need rentals. I'll read the first one. Here we go again. Any small rental out there? It's like a joke. It's like jovial, right? Because they can't find anything. So there was talk in the last city council meeting about traffic and how this property has the commercial viability because of traffic. So let's talk about traffic and commercial space. So I personally don't live here full-time. I do have a property. I'm involved with this property as well. But I took the time to drive by, like was mentioned, when I was at the Walmart, world's largest retailer, 50 yards away, you have empty shelves of retail space. But here, we're talking about keeping commercial nodes. Okay. So when I look at that and I see that there's one restaurant that just opened up, and I hope they flourish, looks like they're doing great, there's a lot of commercial space there. But we're trying to hang on to this. The last city council meeting that I watched on the 27th, you know, there's a few quotes from Councilmember Lane that we need workforce housing. That's a quote. Another quote is, we need to have lots where we can build residential. There was another gentleman in the audience, Mr. Parra, I believe his name was, his name was, a commercial broker. He stated that commercial nodes were a 60s tactic. Mayor Sheehan yourself said the general plan supports this, and it's our guiding document. As I mentioned about this being in the news and newspapers and things like that in an article dated July 13th of this year titled, "City Has A Role To Play In Affordable Housing." This is a quote, "The city would be better served by addressing the issue of affordable housing by ensuring there's plenty of opportunity for developers to build it. That's done through zoning and perhaps some building incentives," end quote. We're not looking for building incentives here. All we're asking for is that you look at the viability of this project and just, and the answer will be self-evident. If a commercial project was viable there, it would have been done in the last 30 years. If a commercial project was viable, they would have outbid us and bought the property. The market's speaking. The residents have spoken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right. Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Morris. What would the setbacks, Dr. Seamus talks about his adjoining property being five feet away. What are the setback requirements?
The setback requirements for the R3 are five feet on the side, like most residential properties, and then 20 feet in the front and 20 feet in the rear. In comparison, the setbacks for a commercial property could be zero, right up to the lot line for a commercial property, if you want to compare the setbacks between commercial and residential.
So if that were, if that area were to have developed in a commercial front, potentially his building, the commercial building there could be touching the other building that would build right next door?
They could butt up right up against each other with the right fire code ratings and building code ratings. They could do that, yes.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Since my name was mentioned, I just want to reiterate what I had said before. We do need workforce housing in residential areas. You know, this is the one commercial property that's there is a dental office. It's not a retail store that's relying on other stores around them. And I would think for a dental office, that additional residential would be good, but that's not here nor there. I'm not in that business. But this has been a commercial property for a long time, and nobody has built a commercial or wants to build a commercial building there. And this doesn't take away all of the commercial property in the area. There is still additional commercial property up there should a business want to come in and build, and the surrounding area is mostly residential. So we've been working on workforce housing, and what are we going to do, and how can the city help, and what needs to be done? And we've said, we can put the people in the same room to talk, and that's what we're doing right here. We have somebody that's come into the room, talking to us, that wants to build workforce housing. So I myself, absolutely, I agree with this project, and I think it's a great idea, and it's going to be an asset to the community, and I hope it will end up being an asset to the dental office that's already there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. You said it was a five-foot setback, and somebody had mentioned there's a 13-foot elevation between property lines. Is this true? I mean. I mean-
Well, at this point, it would be, we haven't seen a, there's not been a permit submitted to the city for development of this residential property. There's a site plan that generally he's made available for his public meeting, for his neighborhood meeting. If there's something grading going on there, it's going to have to meet all the safety requirements that are built into the building codes. So, there'll be two-to-one slopes and/or retaining walls with railings, things like that, as required per the building code. So, if the concern is, what's that slope? If the slope is going to be a big drop-off or something there, it'll all be covered through the building codes, building and safety. So, they're looking out for things like that.
So, if I understand correctly, when the owner of the dental said that he has a cliff over there, I would be assuming that the previous people put in their own retaining walls or did the two-to-one slope, correct?
I believe on the, I think he's commenting on the northern side of his property with this multiple-family project going on. It would typically, in my understanding, have to meet the slope requirements to a minimum slope, not to exceed the maximum slope in that area. This is a future project area. This is, this development is being phased, and this is a future phase, so it's not completely built out yet. So, it could be an interim. Later, they're going to come in and do more refined grading and other-
They can impinge on his property, so if they have to do a 13-foot wall on that side, that's the developer's responsibility, is what I know. But again, we're here for zoning, and my concerns are through these nodes around these communities, and we just dealt with one on Anita. When somebody's almost grandfathered in on that commercial area, and then we just change their zoning all around them, that's very concerning to me. And I'd certainly hope if you have a five-foot setback and there is a 13-foot drop, that there is definitely a two-to-one slope in the building department and all of that. So, and I'm sure you'll do that. I have no question about that. But this is a tough one, because we all do need workforce housing, and we need rental, for sure. But I have big concerns about some people already owning these nodes, and they're smack-dagging in the middle of them.
Any other questions or comments of members of the council?
Make a motion if you'd like.
Yeah, entertain a motion.
Thank you. Based on the rec- That is not to suggest a motion. I approve, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 21-1261, amending the zoning classification and district boundary for 2860 Jamaica Boulevard South, tract 2271, block 10 lots 8, 9, and 10, from limited commercial C1 to limited multifamily R3.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any final questions or comments? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 8.3 is adopt ordinance number 21-1262, amending the zoning classification and district boundary of PD 07-0020007, removing and rezoning 6535, 6545, 6555, and 6565, Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, lots 7, 8, 9, and 10, from C2 PD to new C2 PD with the following stipulations. So, turn it over to you, Mr. Morris.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. These next two items may seem a little familiar. They came to you a few months ago as one combined request. I'll go into a little more background on that during this presentation. The subject properties here are four lots. They're at the intersection, they're at the intersection of London Bridge Road and Highway 95, and they front on Showplace Avenue. The airport is obviously to the east, and then the city limits on London Bridge Road to the west there. The current zoning is C2 plan development. The request is to rezone it from that one, from that plan development, and get rid of the plan development, plan, the development plan for that, and allow some other uses and some exceptions to the underlying zoning district. There's also some storage units to the, excuse me, to the west, across Showplace Avenue. A little more history on this. This, in 2007, the Havasu Autoplex Complex Development Plan was approved for about 38 acres. It's this area where the, from the south, for the existing auto dealership, all the way north to London Bridge Road. It was developed basically as an auto-centric sort of plan for development in that area. That original plan development also included an allowance for 36 feet in building height to accommodate proposed Toyota dealership there. The architectural features of the Toyota building exceeded 30 feet, so they asked for additional height for 36 feet. It also had some language in there about architectural detail for the properties facing Highway 95 for that project, for that plan development overall. Those stipulations, as well as other stipulations, were included in ordinance number 07-883, which is included in your packet. Some of those conditions are asked to be carried over into this, these plan developments. That's why I bring that up. So, here's the proposed, the previously approved development plan for the overall 38 acres. The subject lots are here, lots 7, 8, 9, and 10. They're originally laid out as car dealerships. They're asked to be rezoned to C2, with the exception to not allow storage units on there. And here's, here's the subject properties highlighted in red. The area of the rest of the auto, proposed auto mall, again, the Toyota dealership over here to the south, and then storage units. The city approved some storage units in May, excuse me, in December, excuse me. In 2017, the city council approved this rezon for the storage units here along Showplace Avenue. And then, in May 21, the subject lots here earlier this year, these subject lots, and then lots 4 and 5 came to the council with the request to rezone them. And the subject lots here, 7 through 10, with the same request that they're, basically, they're making the same request now. The city council, at that time, for lots 4 and 5, when they were combined as one application, felt there was, there was concerns about storage units on lots 4 and 5, so the city council took no action on that. The developer heard that council, council's decision on that, and they've come forward and basically broken this up into two requests. This is the first request, is for lots 7, 8, 9, and 10. They're asking, oops, excuse me. They're asking that the subject properties here be taken out of this plan development and given their own new plan development, allowing all C2 uses except for storage units. They're also asking for a height exception to go up to 36 feet and a condition that the buildings facing Highway 95 have architectural character that avoids large, unadorned facades and monotonous reputation of unrelated or inappropriate detail. Basically, make it look good from the highway. Those two conditions, again, were included as part of the original ordinance back in 19, excuse me, 2007. The planning commission heard this at their, excuse me, July 7th meeting, and recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. With that concludes our presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions of the council, Mr. Morris? Would the applicant like to make a presentation on this item?
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, Michael Gordon, Desert Land Group. You guys, obviously, we all know the background here. We've been through this for a couple of months. As Luke alluded to, I think he did a good job of explaining the background here. We broke this into two actions. The next action, I think, will have more discussion. This one, we're simply looking to take these C2 properties that were part of this original PD that were set up for that development plan that you see on your screen to keep the same requirements and standards that were there, remove the overlay here in terms of the actual development plan, which restricts us, the property owners right now, to build exactly what you see on the screen. Take that away, allow all C2 uses, which is what the underlying zoning district is, with an exception for no storage units, which is the concern along the highway. So, in our eyes, this is pretty straightforward. I liken it to kind of what transpired on Park Avenue a few years ago. We had a similar thing in place with a restrictive PD and a site plan that really limited what people could do without going through this process. We've had a lot of interest in these parcels already being developed into various C2 uses that fit within the development standards. The problem is, right now, they might not fit that exact footprint that's on the screen. So, removing that, going back to just straight C2 uses, no storage, with the existing conditions and exceptions that are in place. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this particular item.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Are there any questions on this item of the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I have one for Luke. I know with, because it's a PD, the site plan requires approval. Does that count, remind me, is that council approval, or is that staff approval? How does that process work? Once a plan, I know for this, this one and the next one, we're talking about as well, so.
Thank you for the question. Back in 2007, when the original ordinance, PD ordinance, was written, the city council would do a design review on many projects that were part of a plan development. Since the development code has been updated and revised, the city council doesn't get involved with design review. That's left to staff. So, in this new plan development, it would come to staff for review. So, there would be no design review by the city council necessarily on something like that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. These, the buildings that-
Michael? Oh, Mr. Gordon, he's-
No, I have questions for you. On this property, do we have plans for what kind of commercial buildings are going to go in there? And the reason I'm asking that, and I'll kind of give you a background. The storage units that are behind there, when those were first approved back in, I think it was 2017, we were told they were going to be like man caves and not look like storage units. And now, when you first come into the city, the first thing you see is plain old storage units, and that's what we're trying to get away from.
Correct.
So, is this, the aesthetics of this new PD with no storage units going to hide the storage units that are down there?
Well, that's, I mean, we've talked to, we have a number of people looking at these four pieces of property. A couple of them, I believe, have already been into staff, talking about the potential development uses there. A lot of different uses are allowed in C2. Couple of the conditions that are in place architecturally, again, the exact language, architecturally sound exteriors, landscaping, and things that are required. I mean, the intent, you're not getting no longer a specific site plan. Each of these four parcels will come forward to staff to review a site plan. I feel there's conditions that are in place to develop whatever those C2 developments might be that are going to look more like a retail-commercial, you know, development than obviously what was developed across the street. I understand the concern. I think I was on Planning and Zoning when that all transpired, and that was the pitch at the time, was that this was going to be a buffer for the storage, which is in essence what we're going to talk about in the next item. In this case, what we see happening right now is by getting rid of this PD with this development plan, it will facilitate, I think, pretty quickly, the development of two, three, or all four of these parcels into commercial retail uses that should give the citizens and the council what you're looking for or asking for, that being some sort of development that looks retail, looks commercial, to act as that buffer.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this matter? And Mr. Sharma, I believe you signed up to speak on the next one. Okay, fair enough. Would anyone like to address the council on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
All right, Councilmember Moses?
I move to adopt ordinance number 21-1262, amending the zoning classification and district boundary of PD 07-0020007, removing and rezoning 6535, 6545, 6555, and 6565, Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, lots 7, 8, 9, and 10, from C2 PD to a new C2 PD, including the following development standards. Prohibiting the allowable land use of self-storage mini-storage, allowing a maximum building height of 36 feet. Buildings facing Highway 95 shall have architectural character that avoids large, unadorned facades and monotonous repetition of unrelated or inappropriate detail.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is adopt ordinance number 21-1263, amending the zoning classification and district boundary of PD 07-0020007, Havasu Auto Complex, removing and rezoning 6520 and 6530, Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, Lot 5, and a portion of Lot 4 from the general commercial plan development C2 PD to a new C2 PD with stipulations. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you again. The subject property is just a little south of the previous item. It's between Showplace Avenue and the city limits, sandwiched between London Bridge Road and also Highway 95. The zoning map shows the C2 PD for that whole area. The previously approved development plan, the subject lots are lots 4, actually, Lot 5 and a portion of Lot 4 here. I'll go to the next slide, it'll show a little more. So, the subject property is all of Lot 5 and then a portion of Lot 4. They're proposing to rezone this to a new, get out of this existing PD and rezone it to a new PD based on reconfigured lots and allowing, I'll go to the next slide to show you a little more, actually, mark more, just to be more clear. So, here's the, we've rotated this 90 degrees now. So, here's Showplace Avenue, and Highway 95 is farther on the right on this slide. So, here's Lot 5, and then Lot 4 is below it. So, I'm going to go one more slide here. So, the area outlined in red is part of Lot 5, and then this other area outlined, oh, in red, they're both outlined in red. The rectangle is lots 5, part of Lot 5, and then a lot of, a part of Lot 4 down here. So, they propose to split Lot 4, have a piece of Lot 4 go to Lot 5, and then have the front of Lot 5 separate. So, they're calling the front of Lot 5, 5A. And then they're calling the rest of Lot 5 and a portion of Lot 4, 4B and 5B here. And they have two different areas here that are part of this request. So, what they're requesting for, lots 4B and 5B, it's about four acres. They want to adopt this submitted development plan. They're asking to allow all C2 uses, which would include storage units. And they also suggesting that buildings facing Showplace Avenue should have that architectural character that avoids large, unadorned facades, monotonous reputation, repetition of unrelated and inappropriate detail, like the previous example, the previous case. So, that's for lots 4B and 5B combined there. And then, the lot out in front, or the portion out in front of the property that's on Showplace Avenue with the highway just to the right of it, they're proposing that, in this area, adopt the submitted development plan. So, the layout would look something like this when it's built. Allow all C2 uses except for storage units, and allow that maximum building height to 36 feet instead of the 25 feet. And I have the buildings facing Showplace Avenue have some architectural detail. And then, have, because of the, their intent to help buffer any storage units back here with something that's going to help buffer them, be it, in this case, in the long term, a combination of the building, the new buildings that would be on Lot 5A, and some enhanced landscaping around the area to have that together. So, they would have all landscape buffers shown on the development plan would be developed in conjunction so before or with the development of the lots behind it where the storage units are. So, their thought would be to have this, excuse me, there's a fly buzzing here. Have this buffer be in place with the development of lots 4B and 5B as far as the landscaping. And I think they may have another proposal that they'll want to share with you after this presentation. So, that actually concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Morris before we bring the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
What, what happens to zoning of the rest of Lot 4? It stays in the existing PD?
Thank you, yes, it would stay in the existing PD. It's not part of this request. The rest of part, so the rest of Lot 4 would remain in the existing PD.
Any other questions? Mr. Morris? And then, Mr. Gordon, if you'd like to make your presentation?
Good evening again, Mayor, council. So, the second part of this tonight, obviously, as Luke just described, we were in front of you a couple of months ago talking about this item. Heard the concerns of council and leadership in terms of trying- Heard the concerns of council and leadership in terms of trying to create a buffer here to not, um, replicate what's happened in the past in, uh, just above, up the street here. Uh, worked with ownership of the property and trying to put a development plan together that make, made sense. Uh, ownership of the overall property, potential developer of this property, and looking at how we could achieve that. So what you see in front of you is a development plan that would replace the planned development that's in place currently. As Luke alluded to, the, the balance, which is a majority of the site of parcel of Lot 4 would stay as is, the way it is in the PD right now in the auto mall. That ownership is the ownership group of, of Anderson Toyota. And they intend to keep it like that for now in that, in that, um, planned development as it sits. Uh, breaking this apart, uh, taking just over an acre of the frontage on Showplace Avenue and setting it aside in the exact same configuration we talked about in the previous item. So the conditions in terms of C2 uses, uh, the conditions related to, uh, architectural facades, landscaping, the height of the building, um, what, what it really sets up to be is another parcel very similar to the four we just talked about. So you'll see the goal here is to ultimately create a strip of commercial retail development, uh, all about the same size that front the highway. And this development, we feel, will help create that buffer that we heard from council in the past. And as we've talked with ownership and with leadership and, and some of the council members, we understand the concerns there and ownership's willing to move forward, uh, and, and do just that. So this time bringing it back, presenting a little more detail, showing you exactly what would be developed and how we would go about it. One of the things that, um, we've talked about since then, that I think is important ultimately here tonight is, Luke, if you go back to the conditions of 4B and 5B, obviously the basic conditions we've talked about, but also the concern over Lot 5A being able to be, or I'm sorry, 4B and 5B being able to be developed without that buffer that we're talking about. So as we've talked through it, the way it was initially presented, there was nothing there that triggered that said, you know, that didn't prevent, I should say, storage units or the development of 4B and 5B from happening prior to the, the, the buffer request being in place. We took some of those concerns back to ownership, um, and talked through this. And they're okay with the condition that we presented to staff actually, uh, last night and this morning, that would require that parcel 5A has to be developed prior to or in conjunction with the development of 4B and 5B. So we're here adding, uh, freely adding that condition tonight to help satisfy that concern, to help come back to council and say, we heard what you said, we want to see a buffer there. If this is developed like this, then the buffer is going to be developed at the same time or prior to. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think our goal again was to develop something that fits the, what the city wants to see along Showplace, the part that you see from the highway. It does allow a taller, uh, use there in a C2 use that, you know, will help with a buffer between that and the landscaping to what would be storage, yeah, behind that, which is obviously going to be a lot lower in construction. Um, and I think you'll find that that'll help achieve what the goals were. I'd be happy to answer any questions associated with that, um, and talk about that condition further if we need to.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gordon. So when this item was before us, I believe in April, uh, the council gave, uh, direction to, to you and your team that we weren't interested in just having, uh, an array of, of storage units. And the buffer was really, really important to us. So thank you for going back and, and bringing something forward that I believe was the intent of the council at that time. And for, I, I know at the Planning and Zoning Commission, they had some discussion about, um, having Lot 5A be built in conjunction with and, and taking that seriously and going back to ownership to get that. So I think this is the will of the council and I appreciate, uh, your team doing that work.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Is there any questions or comments of, uh, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Uh, my hope, and to reiterate what the mayor said, thank you. Uh, appreciate, uh, all the hard work you've done. This has been a concern of mine, especially after the last time, as I said, they were supposed to be man caves and be pretty and that never happened. But the question I have on this, on Lot 5A, you have building D there. Yeah, that building right there, thank you.
Yeah.
Is that an actual commercial building or is that just, uh, office space for the rentals of the storage units?
No, that would be a separate development, an actual retail or commercial development piece.
Okay, and then where's the access to get into the storage area?
It goes right, right where it says Lot 5A. So one of the challenges with this site is you can see all the squiggly lines and dash lines and everything. There is a buried underground stormwater system that goes all the way from Showplace right through where it says 5A and then zigzags its way through the site. That's kind of what resulted in that little sliver of 4B being added to this so that it, because without that, you can see how much of that site was undevelopable because of the easements and the drainage and everything in place. So we got a little creative on how we piece this together. But the, the, there will be an easement ultimately on how this is broken apart and platted and ingress egress shared use agreement between these two parcels. But 5A would develop as a standalone commercial retail component, uh, under C2 uses. And the access to the storage in the back would be through that parking lot, through that driveline that Luke's highlighting right there.
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you. You, you've done exactly what it is. I was against this project and, and I think you've allied my fears, so I, I truly appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Gordon, I think we're good. Uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? And Mr. Sharma, did? Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to, uh, address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Koch?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
Once again, like the last one, this is lengthy, so. That's what it is. I drew the short straw. I move to adopt ordinance number 21-1263, amending the zoning classification and district boundary of PD 07-002-00007, Havasu Auto Complex, removing and rezoning 6520 and 6530, Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, Lot 5, and a portion of Lot 4 from general commercial planned C2PD to a new CT, C2PD as follows. For lots 4B and 5B, adopt the submitted development plan, allow all C2 uses. The building facing Showplace Avenue shall have architectural character that avoids large unadorned facades and monotonous repetition of unrelated or inappropriate detail. And also add a condition for that Lot 5A must be developed prior to or concurrently with the development of the 4B and 5B lots.
Second.
No, I'm not done.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. For Lot 5A, there's still more. For Lot 5A, adopt the submitted development plan. Allow all C2 uses except self-storage mini-storage, storage units. Allow a maximum building height of 36 feet. Buildings facing Showplace Avenue shall have architectural character that avoids large unadorned facades and monotonous repetition of unrelated or inappropriate detail. And all landscape buffers, as shown on the development plan, shall be developed in conjunction with the development of lots 4B and 5B. Now I'm done.
How about a second now?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion?
I, I, she, she said it though. I just don't see it in my suggested action. I don't.
It's added at, uh, number four. So in this, uh, item text, item four, uh, Ms. Williams will add that fourth, uh, stipulation, uh, that it has to be done before or in conjunction with.
So I'm not voting on what the verbiage in this, I'm.
Voting on what, uh, Vice Mayor Koch's motion was.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
Yes. All right, any other comments? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 8.5. We'll, uh, change directions from zoning and, uh, go, go in another direction. So 8.5 is a ward bid for the taxiway A and connectors reconstruction project to Combs Construction Company, Inc. Mr. Sloan?
Good evening, Mayor, council. So what we have before you tonight is the taxiway, the award for the construction of the airport taxiway A and connectors reconstruction project. Um, the airport was constructed in 1990, so over 30 years ago. And the taxiway asphalt is original to the construction of the airport. Um, this project consists of complete removal of the asphalt on the taxiway A and the six connectors. The reconstruction of the taxiway will include new base and asphalt, new pavement markings, signs, and edgeway lighting. The project will be divided into three phases to allow for the runway to be open during construction. Limited night closures of the runway will just occur during the construction of the connectors. Following slides kind of give a better idea of the condition of the, of the asphalt in the taxiway. You can see this very severe cracking. Many, many patches that have been done over the years. This one shows a lot more of the, the cracking and the potholes, um, along the entire taxiway. In addition to that, the signs would be replaced during that and the edge lighting as well along the entire length of the taxiway. The city conducted a competitive, competitive bidding process and received five bids for this project. Combs Construction Company is the apparent little bidder with a bid amount of $6,475,069.70. This is significantly lower than the engineer's cost estimate of $7,593,119. The project will, will be 100% funded by FAA Airport Improvement Program grant. Um, and construction is to start in October of this year and be complete by May of 2022. And that concludes my staff report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sloan. Any questions or comments of council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, uh, for questions or possible, possible motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
A motion?
Yes, please.
I move to award the taxiway A and connectors reconstruction project to Combs Construction Company, Inc. In the amount of $6,475,069.70.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.6 is approve an, uh, addendum eight, task order to the professional services agreement with CNS Engineers, Inc. for construction management services for the taxiway A and connectors reconstruction project. Mr. Sloan? Mr. Sloan, I, I, I don't know if your microphone's picking you up, so.
I'm sorry, huh?
It might have to, is your mic, maybe adjust.
I think it's on now.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry about that. I'll start over. So this is the construction management services for the taxiway A and connectors reconstruction project that was just presented. CNS engineers did the design for this project and will perform construction management services during construction. Anticipated project length is about seven to eight months. And Public Works has negotiated a fee of $587,916 with CNS engineers for construction management services. An app review of the, their proposal and an independent fee estimate, prepared by the Adams Company, we'd recommend award of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Sloan?
Are, are any aspects of the airport going to be out of commission while the work is being done?
There will be limited night, limited night closures.
We'll, we'll still maintain functionality, just kind of divert traffic or are we going to be closed down for a?
No, so the taxiway will be separated into three phases. So there will always be access to the runway during the day. It's just when we're actually constructing the connectors right next to the runway, we might have to close the runway for a short period of time at night.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I'm not sure if they can answer this question at this time. Can you just explain a little bit how that 100% federal aviation airport improvement works? I just read something on social media where it made a comment that the taxpayers were paying this amount and obviously that's not the truth. Can you just explain how that works? How the funding works?
Sure, it, it's a 100% um, fund grant that was accepted by this city. And it's a reimbursable grant for, so everything that we paid for, for the construction of the project and for this one that we're talking about now, the construction management services is reimbursed through, from the FAA 100%.
Yeah. But we would be remiss to say the FAA still is, uh, it is our tax dollars that we're paying at the federal level. It's not local tax dollars, but it, uh, if we didn't accept the grant, it wouldn't lessen our federal tax burden. Uh, so it's advantageous to be able to use those grant dollars for this economic driver for our community, so. Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Campbell?
I just have a comment. It, for a runway that's already in place, I, I'm going to go back to these engineering costs of $587,916. I know it's all federal tax dollars that we're getting, but that seems like an absorbent amount.
Yeah, uh, generally, uh, it's my understanding in, in the 10% range. So if we're somewhere in, in between eight and 12 is, is the answer that I've received. I don't know, Mr. Knutson, if you have a, a thought on that or?
Sorry, the plastic glass always hinders. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you asked about the normal to match? It's usually about like a four, a 4% to less than 4% match on, on FAA.
I know it was about, uh, the percentage of, um, the, like the engineering and construction management.
Oh, I see, I see. In, in those terms, yeah, that's around 10% is, uh, is. And that helps us with having that specialization, um, that we don't have, uh, on the team, but also have, helps us with assurances that that, uh, project is done, uh, satisfactorily and, and that, that work is warranting, warranted by the, uh, the, the contractor as well as the, the oversight.
Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
We as council members perform professional services to the city. So I think we should get 10% of the budget as well. Just so the next time we renegotiate, so.
Nobody wants your expertise.
Like that 10% of what the total income is, that would be good. We can do this.
All right, any other comments?
Thank you. Mr. Sloan, I just want to say thank you for the, the work that you guys are doing to get 100% funding to the FAA. Uh, you know, we've talked about this and yeah, they are tax dollars. And as the mayor said, that it doesn't, uh, lessen our tax burden if we don't get the money back. We pay those taxes, they go to the federal government and then they will go to Phoenix or they will go to Philadelphia or they will go to Florida or they will go anywhere. And so the fact that you're getting 100% funding to keep our airport up and running, uh, and bringing those tax dollars that our people are paying back into our community and not having to use local tax dollars. Thank you for that. Uh, truly, truly appreciate it. And it's great for our community what you guys are doing, so. Uh, and always bringing other dollars back into our city. So with that, if there's no other comments, Merrill, I'll make the motion.
Is, uh, did I open the public hearing?
I thought so.
I don't think so. Yeah, give me a second. I, well, go ahead. Hey, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to.
I thought you'd already did that.
Yes. I, I'm not, I might have. I, I lose track sometimes.
And let's be redundant.
Yes.
It's better to be redundant than not do it. I move to approve addendum eight, task order to the professional services agreement with CNS Engineers, Inc. for construction management services for the taxiway A and connectors reconstruction project in the amount of $587,916.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.7 is, uh, 8.7 is approve addendum seven, task order to the professional services agreement with CNS Engineers, Inc. for design services for the runway 14-32 rehabilitation project. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. So similar project, this project is for the design only this year of the runway 1432 rehabilitation project. So our runway, which is right by the taxiway we just talked about, 8,000 feet long, so almost two miles. It will consist of a mill and fill of the existing asphalt and completely removable and replacement in several severely degraded areas. Um, and it'll also include new, uh, pavement markings and signage. So a few slides here to kind of show what's happening to our existing runway now. Significant ravelling, um, significant cracks. You can see that the depth of some of these and the offset is, um, not a good situation for a runway. In, in large areas, especially near to the connectors of the taxiway, where all the airplanes are either landing and turning or turning. And so this is a, this year we'd be actually being able to do the design. And then plan on fiscal '23 for construction. So our airport term consultant CNS engineer submitted a proposal for the design. So our airport term consultant CNS engineer submitted a proposal for the design for the runway fourteen thirty-two rehabilitation project in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And after review by the city and compared to the independent fee estimate prepared by the Adams Company, determined that this fee was, the fee proposal was reasonable. This project again will be one hundred percent FAA Airport Improvement Program grant funded. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you uh for that. So this is the design services that's already programmed for the runway rehab in future years with that grant funding. So I'm getting ahead of it, having the design ready so that we can, can be able to move forward right when that programming is done uh for that funding to come forward. Uh, do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Sloan?
I, I gotta imagine this is going to take down the airport for a little bit, right?
Well, this particular item is just the design, so it'll come back before us. I, I believe it's programmed in twenty-three.
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, so back in, in twenty twenty-three, we'll, we'll address that and how they're going to, to deal with that.
Wow, okay.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for uh discussion or possible motion?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember.
A long time ago, I mentioned it, uh, asphalt in Lake Havasu City is the worst product. And we sell it, so I'm telling you that straight out. It's terrible. Did we really look into uh? A lot of airports are concrete and I'm just finding this, if somebody can tell me on staff what, if we looked into the price of concrete versus asphalt and um long-term maintenance moving forward so that we don't have to deal with our airport, that should not look like that. That is terrible. If you understand my question.
Sure, as, as they do a cost benefit analysis on the runway and the replacement of it, they would look at concrete and they would look at asphalt or um, and in the, in this case, we're going to do a fog seal or coating seal this year just to get us one more year through this design period. And then it also, based on FAA regulations, it comes into the type of aircraft, the weight of aircraft and the frequency. Usually, and the size of the, from what we've seen here, the frequency and size of the aircraft does not justify the cost of concrete. And so that's part of the cost benefit analysis when they do the design.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I move to approve addendum seven task order to the professional services agreement with CNS Engineers Incorporated for design services for the runway fourteen dash three-two rehab, rehabilitation project in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point eight is award agreement for professional services, construction specialty inspections for the tank N dash two A dash zero seven tank replacement project to tank industry consultants. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. This project is to replace the existing one million gallon water storage tank with a new one point five million gallon tank. The construction contract was awarded to Paso Robles Tank on the July thirteenth city council meeting, as was the construction and management contract um was awarded to the originally designed firm of Atkins. This award is for the construction specialty inspections, which consist of monitoring and inspecting the steel fabrication process, foundation installation, welding and tank coating process in the field. This is a specialized field that requires the expertise of a specialized, their specialty inspection firm to ensure that the city receives a quality product. Public Works has negotiated a fee of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars with tank industry consultants and recommends award of this project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember.
I just have to say, when I first got on city council, I was surprised that we hired a consultant to oversee a project that we're paying someone to do, but having been on council for as long as I have and knowing some of the problems we have with public works projects in the past, I now see the value of why we have a professional service company to oversee the construction to make sure it's done the way it's supposed to do. So I think some people at home, because I wondered that as well, but it, we don't always get what we pay for and they're supposed to be there to catch and make sure that it happens, so.
Yeah, a lot of these items are very specialized and so having the right experts at the table to help with this infrastructure ensures uh good management going forward. Yeah, Mr. Sloan? It's like an extended warranty.
I'd like to add on to that if I could, just being in the, the engineering division is the division responsible for executing the design and the construction of all of the CIP projects. Um, this year we have a thirty-five million dollar workload, it's about twenty-four projects. And we have two project managers and myself. So, you know, having these construction management contracts is, is vital to you know, having the projects, you know, be done successful and getting good use of our money. Um, we can't be on site every day when we're managing that kind of a workload and we are currently actively recruiting for more project managers, more engineers, but it's a, it's an ongoing process, so. We do appreciate the support. We do need the specialty, you know, the, the help from our consultants to get through this.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Alright, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion.
Mayor motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, I almost got you there. I move to award the agreement for professional services for the tank N two A O seven tank replacement project to tank industry consultants in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point nine is award task order agreement to the engineering master professional services agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. for design of the horizontal collector well redevelopment project. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. So the horizontal collector well, which is located at London Beat Bridge Beach, uh, was constructed in two thousand and one with a design capacity of twenty-six million gallons per day. And it's the city's main source of raw water. Currently, it is operating in about sixty to seventy percent of its rated capacity and requires rehabilitation to bring it back up to the level of it was when it was installed. This next slide shows configuration of the horizontal collector well, which consists of a concrete casing with sixteen foot diameter and ninety-eight feet deep. Then there are about fourteen twelve inch diameter laterals totaling nineteen hundred feet of horizontal wirebound well screen feeding into the caisson through individual gate valves. The pumps are loaded, located at the top of the caisson and pump from there. Currently, only two of the, two of the three pumps can be run at one time due to the increased silt and sand in the laterals. And two of the laterals are permanently shut down due to this increased salt, uh, silt and sand production. When we get to the actual works, these, this slide kind of shows some of the development tools that we could use to potentially clean the laterals. It includes a jetting tool, uh, of jetting with high pressure water or a bore blast tool where we use compressed nitrogen gas um to blow up the inside of the lateral. And the next slide shows kind of how that's possible to be done. We drain the horizontal collector well. You can see in the slide, the, the gate valve, we add a Y. And so we can actually use these type of development tools into these horizontal laterals and still have a Y connection to discharge all of the waste that comes from that. Pretty, it's pretty complicated, but it, it is possible to do when we get down in there. So we're talking about tonight is the design and development. Um, so this site, sorry, site investigation, which includes removal of the building roof and well pumps, sending divers into the caisson and inspecting each lateral with a camera, determining the discharge location for water during rehabilitation, um, and determining the type of method, whether it's a bore blast or a jet tool. Um, and, and developing the drawings and specifications for bidding this project. Public Works is currently working on a backup water supply in the Northwell Field that is anticipated to go online and then at the end of this fiscal year. So this will allow the horizontal collector well to be taken offline for this redevelopment, redevelopment work in fiscal twenty-three, which we expect that project to take four to six months. And that concludes my report.
Yeah, great, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Alright, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Mayor motion? Yes, Councilmember Lane?
I move to award task order agreement number P A zero, 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 four, three, six, to the engineering master professional services agreement five, zero, zero, one, three, four, with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. for design of the horizontal collector well redevelopment project in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Second.
I'm glad to see this project getting done.
Very thankful.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Alright, item nine is current events. Are there any council committee reports?
I'm excited to say that the PED is expanding their board. I think we're looking at at least another four more new members joining us.
Excellent. Thank you. Alright, item ten, our future meetings are on Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one at six P M. There's a regular meeting. On Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M will be a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M will be a regular meeting. Item eleven, are there any future discussion items? Alright, item twelve, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
We have a motion. Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, it, uh, it, it called to the public. We had that at the beginning of the meeting. Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, we have to follow the agenda so all citizens have the same opportunity and access to, uh, to the meeting. But, uh, uh, next time. So, alright, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. Everyone, thank you for being here and joining us. Be kind, we'll see you next time.